Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It is not September 22nd, it is May the 20th, 2021. Councilman Rick LaLance, as our prayer and our pledge.
All right, y'all bow with me. Laura, thank you for today. We thank you for all the blessings in our lives. We thank you for this city, the employees, the citizens. God, we just hope that you'll give us guidance tonight, as always, and help us make the best decisions possible. Laura, I pray a special prayer over the kids that are graduating from middle school, high school, as they lead into new areas of their lives, and wish them the best. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think this is the last of our proclamations to be able to celebrate, come on over, to celebrate how several of our teams from Rutherford County did in the state basketball championship. We've had Blackman here, we've had the Blackman Women's Team, we've had the Providence Christian Academy Women's Team, and tonight, we get to honor the Segal Stars High School Men's Basketball Team. Whereas through its discipline, dedication, and hard work, the Segal Stars High School Boys Basketball Team experienced a spectacular season proudly representing Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And whereas the Segal Stars High School Boys Basketball Team overwhelmed the competition and posted an impressive 2021 District 7 AAA Regular Season Champions with an undefeated record of 14-0 and 27-5 overall. Whereas the 2021 Segal Stars High School Boys Basketball Team finished as Region 4 AAA Tournament Champions and Sectional Champions. And whereas the 2021 Segal Stars High School Boys Basketball Team made an appearance in the Elite Eight State Tournament, the Segal Stars High School Boys Basketball Team had three players that scored 1,000 career points during the 2021 season. And the Segal Stars High School Boys Basketball Team, along with head coach Darian Birdwell and staff, will forever be designated for their storybook successes. And now, therefore, I shame McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as a day to recognize Segal Stars High School Boys Basketball Team in Murfreesboro, and encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing and honoring the significant contributions, visibility, and notoriety the team and its coaches have brought to our city. You'll hear a familiar name, but to tell us the seniors that were on your team this year.
Yeah, we had seven seniors this year, led by number zero Zion Swater, Matthew Schneider, Isaiah Lotzi, Martice Jackson, Von Tarius Reed, Mikey Patterson, and Jalen Wetzel. And those seven guys, and three of those scored over 1,000 points for their career, and just a great, great representation of Segal High School and Rutherford County athletics. So just super proud of them to be their coach.
Great. Appreciate it. Many people will know Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief Alan Swater, who was retired with the city three or four years ago. His son is Zion Swater, so many of us know him since he was, really, since he was born, that he's been here in the city. And another small fact, I coached Martice Coleman in 11-year-old basketball at the city rec league, so no fault to mine.
He overcame that.
He overcame that coaching and was successful. So, all right, you have the consent agenda in front of you. You have 15 different items. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
There aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Motion, a second. Motion, and Councilman Shacklet has a second.
I had a note we were pulling 15. Is that not the case?
It is on the agenda as being pulled. So can your motion be amended for item, Rick, item 1 through 14?
It is done.
Okay, second, all right.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to new business, and we have Resolution 21R21. This is the fiscal year 21 budget amendment for schools.
Good evening, council. We have one budget amendment before you today. It's to recognize new revenue, just over $1.5 million. This is new grant revenue that will be budgeted in the general purpose fund, and it is to fund a summer learning camp and stream camp revenue. Both the board and the state have approved these grants. And it's for teachers' educational assistance, related benefits, and materials and supplies. And as Trey said earlier today, we are expecting some additional revenue, another $300,000, bringing this particular grant to $1.8 million. And I'll bring that before you in a future meeting very soon. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, well now moving to land use matters. We have before us the rezoning of approximately .66 acres located on the west side of Lee Street and north of Jackson Street. Mr. Blomley.
Evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. We've got four public hearings tonight for land use matters, the first of which, as you mentioned, is a rezoning request for property located along the west side of Lee Street. It's in the block that is in between Forest Street and Jackson Street. It's about two-thirds of an acre. It's currently zoned CMR, which we don't see a whole lot of CMR these days, but it's mostly in the old hospital area. It's medical office residential district. The applicants are requesting a rezone to PRD, residential district, for a seven-unit townhouse development called Lee Street Towns. So this is really one of the first projects in this particular area, the first redevelopment projects in this particular area. The property has one single-family home on it right now, which would be demolished, and, as I mentioned, seven townhouse units would be proposed to be located in its place. There would be a three-unit townhouse building directly along Lee Street, and then a four-unit townhouse building at the rear of the property with parking in between. The city's future land use map recommends that the property develop as suburban residential. I think that we'll be coming to you with a, or coming to the planning commission with a modification to that with our future land use map update. Suburban residential recommendation is more of a, as it's called, a suburban residential character, something that we don't really see in the downtown area. So while it is, while this request with seven units, seven townhouse units is inconsistent with the suburban residential land use character of the 2035 plan, it is generally consistent with the North Highland Avenue study, which more zeros in on this particular area. The North Highland Avenue study recommends that this area develop as what it calls mixed residential neighborhood. It's a classification that recommends up to four-unit attached residential buildings, sidewalks with street trees, shallow setbacks. It makes provisions for a variety of residential dwellings, one, two, three, and four unit structures. This request is consistent with the North Highland Avenue planning study. Staff is supportive of the zoning request, including the deviation from the 2035 land use map, for the following reasons. We believe that the proposed residential land use will be compatible with the surrounding residential land use, and the proposed development will contribute to the vitality and quality of life in the area, contributing the positive trend toward reinvestment of our downtown, and that the zoning request is generally consistent with the recommendations of the North Highland Avenue planning study. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on April the 7th, and voted to recommend its approval to the city council. Mr. Enick Jarro with Huddleston Steel Engineering is here to make a brief PowerPoint presentation. He and his client, Brian Burns, who is the developer, are present if you have any questions for them. Also, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'd like to invite Mr. Jarro to come on up.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor, members of the council, Enick Jarro with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Mr. Brian Burns with me here tonight, who's one of the developers, and Mr. John Jones is also a partner of his. As Matthew mentioned, this is, it's a larger lot. It's about two-thirds of an acre. Most of them are, all of them surrounding are smaller, older homes. The home that's on there is being demolished, moved off the site. Mr. Burns and Mr. Jones want to develop this into seven townhome units. You can see the front picture of the character of the building is sort of Craftsman style. It'll have brick around the bottom, and then hardy, a couple of different colors of hardy board siding to sort of complement the neighborhood. And like I said, it's one of the first in this area, in this, I guess we'll call that the city core area, in this area that's being developed like this. But we think there'll be more of these type developments coming as it moves on to redevelop the downtown area. Like I said, that's all sort of medical zoning, you might say. There is water and sewer on Lee Street. That's an aerial view of the property. You can see it's a larger lot compared to the surrounding neighborhoods. We do have some photos of A and C are the existing home that's been removed, and then B and D are the homes that are across the street, across Lee Street from this property. That's just some other homes that are up and down the street, you might say, from the property. This is the layout of the site. Like I said, there's three units, as Matthew mentioned, facing Lee Street. There'll be four towards the rear. The parking will be centrally located onto the site. That'll be a formal open space in that area with a fire pit is the main amenity, but there are also some passive seating and other things in the area. So we put the parking internal so that it's not on the street, and there's 14 spaces required and 21 provided county garages. So we want to make sure plenty of parking to keep parking off the street. Just go back to the architecture a little bit. There's, like I say, it's a brick base, and then it's a one-car garage, and it's got a decorative garage door. And like I said, it's a Craftsman-style house, and it's got a couple of different, two-story with a couple different colors of hardy to complement that. Just another sort of picture of all elevations of the building itself. And this is our landscaping plan. There's quite a few trees to the rear. We're hoping to save some of those trees to the rear for the buffer, but if we can't, we're gonna put a Type A buffer around both sides and the rear of the property. But we're hoping to save some of the rear, larger trees there as part of the buffer and supplement that if we need to. And just a couple of other things. There's, like I say, passive seating with a bench. There's that fire pit. We have a mail kiosk on site. We'll have some fencing around that areas of the fire pit. And that's pretty much the layout and everything that we're planning to do. Brian, if you have anything to add, or, okay. That's really all my presentation. I'd be glad to answer the questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Jarro? All right, seeing none, we're gonna need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, we ask you if you'll come to the podium. You'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes representing a group. If you'll ask all questions to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. All right, so anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading, ordinance 21OZ08.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Abstain.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move on to amending the One East College PUD zoning along East College Street planning.
Mayor McFarland, you recall that last spring, we brought before you the rezoning for the One East College PUD. That was approved, and of course, it was a pretty substantial event in our nation with COVID-19, and the project was reevaluated, especially with respect to the inclusion of the hotel in the proposed plan. So they have come back to amend the PUD, and that would include the removal of the hotel, but the setting up of the development so that a hotel could be retrofitted in the future. Mr. Taylor will get into some details of the request itself, and he actually has a fancy movie to show y'all, developed by the architect on the project. But the property is bounded by North Church, North Spring, East Lidle, and East College. It's the old First United Methodist. I know everybody is familiar with it. It is currently zoned PUD, so this is a PUD amendment. The changes that they are proposing are significant enough to warrant the project going back through the amendment process. One change that I wanted to bring to your attention, that is one modification from the approved plan that went to Planning Commission, was that they've added 1,000 square feet in the restaurant space. We vetted the parking numbers, and the parking numbers still work out even with the addition of the 1,000 square feet of restaurant area. But wanted to bring that to your attention since it's slightly different from what was approved, or recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Pattern book has been provided to you in your agenda materials. I won't duplicate anything that Mr. Taylor is going to tell you. I will mention, though, that the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on April the 7th, and recommended its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And Mr. Matt Taylor is here to give a presentation on the specific changes.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied by Mr. Bart Klein, the architect, Mr. Brian Davis, the owner, Mr. Jeff Reed, his attorney, and Mr. John Harney, representing on the real estate side. As Mr. Blomley said, we do have an amendment to the PUD, so I think we're all very familiar with where this is. Bounded by Lidle and College to the north and south respectively, and then North Church and Spring on the west and east respectively. This right here is probably the best sheet to look at. It is at the back of your book. It compares line by line what was in the original PUD versus this one. So we've increased the residential by 35 units. Obviously, as Mr. Blomley just said, the hotel rooms decreased by 110, although we did leave room and have our residential units set up that hotel could come back on the portion that fronts College if that opportunity arises. We increased the number of on-street parking spaces. We also decreased the number of spaces in the garage, and that decrease is purely due to the reduction in demand from the overall project. And then we added the rooftop restaurant, as Mr. Blomley said. Our office and retail space went down by about 15,000 square feet total there. And then the number of stories went down by one and a half. The allowed height stayed at about the same. The amenities, we have a better amenity package with this program as well. So the elevation's just the 2D elevation. So all of these, the top will be what was previously approved. The bottom is gonna be what is proposed now. You'll notice that in each one of these, we continue to leave the existing church in place, so that will be refurbished and repurposed. This is looking from East College, so this will be looking north. This will be on North Spring Street, looking to the west. This will be on North Church Street, looking toward the east. And then from Lidle Street, looking back south. So you can see the colors and forms are generally the same, just we have produced one larger building rather than really four smaller buildings that we had before. As Mr. Blomley said, I will not take any credit for the movie, but we'll start by coming in from You'll start to see some of that rooftop restaurant area, the internal courtyard where some amenities will be. So we'll start at North Church and College, looking back at the existing church. Then we'll come to the north along Church Street. You'll see remnants of the arches and the promenade, the balconies that we planned here. One thing you'll notice as you go all the way around, you will not see any remnant of the garage. You'll see the entrances, but those are fairly muted. We feel like this design does activate the street on all four sides better with balconies and activity on all the corners. Still a very impressive skyline that you'll see across most of downtown.
There's Ronnie walking the work.
Go Ronnie.
Get on board, fellas.
And then we'll end up at College and Spring Street. So we'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I have a couple, sir.
Yes, sir.
I can wait after the public hearing.
Okay, all right. All right, we need to conduct a public hearing for this PUD zoning amendment. So we will open our public hearing for the amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading, ordinance 21OZ09.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Sure.
Matt, will you talk a little bit about the hotel, more in-depth of us losing that piece of the project?
Sure. So the whole time for this project, even originally, my client told me that that was the weakest component from a financial perspective on the whole project. And it was just because it's new to the downtown. So when COVID came about, that really just killed that portion of the project. I think we even mentioned it at our public hearing. We expected to be coming back for this amendment because of that. You just cannot get those, that financing. I think there was four or five hotels in the Nashville area that went bankrupt or had to be bought out of foreclosure. I don't believe we've had any here to my knowledge, but that market has become extremely weak. We've had a couple of hotels that have been under construction during the COVID period and I don't think they got in a hurry to get finished just so they didn't have to convert that loan over. So it's become a very weak component. And unlike Medical Center Parkway, where you could just put off that lot being built till later, all of this project has to be built at one time. It's just not an out parcel type scenario. So we couldn't just phase that out or delay it.
And will you talk a little bit about, you mentioned the potential conversion of the residential units? Talk a little bit about those being, those are all for sale units?
So the ones, all of those front on College Street, which is where the hotel was originally. And so those have all been, those are not for sale that could be converted to the hotel. Those are, or I guess they could be, but the way they're set up, they're all one bedrooms and studios. And so that makes for the easy conversion to a hotel if that opportunity arises at some point in the process.
What's the number of those, Matt?
I think there's 36 of those. So the number is less, but that, it would truly be a boutique style at that point.
And overall density for the project on the site?
So there are, it's about 70, it's 191 residential units on 2.4, so about 79 units to the acre. Yes, sir.
There were two questions at the public hearing at planning about the facade and exterior, correct? Has it been, any decision made just about the facade and exterior?
I'll let the architect touch on that. He's going to be much more well-versed in that than I was.
Bart Klein with Klein Swinney Associates. So we are in a working process always, making it better as we go. So right now, we're kind of in a pricing round to see how we proceed. But arches will be added, the condo entrance will be brought up to speed, and we're all on the same page with the comments. So it's really just trying to, you know, get further down the road with pricing, see what that looks like to make this a viable project from the development side, but also viable project downtown to address the streetscapes.
Okay, thank you. The other question was about the restaurant, and I think there's a component in here that talks about leasing by May 30th or something. What happens if it doesn't?
Well, I'll let Brian talk about that.
Pass the ball.
Yeah. So the restaurant did grow by 1,000 square feet, and I know Mr. Harney's talking with someone, and if you want to talk on that. But there's definitely conversation, so it's a moving target. We're trying to get everything in there. So the big thing is-
Why is the date, May 30th in there, why is?
Well, that was set, so as you understand where the restaurant is on the top level of this parking garage, and it's on the engineering side, we have to know that we got a lease in hand as we develop those drawings, because those drawings often have to be submitted to HUD. This is a HUD-supported project. So it's not like we can go and tack it on at the end. We got to engineer it all as we engineer the building. And right now, we're about, you could say, 35% into engineering of this project. We're pretty far along with contract documents. So we've gone ahead and put it in there, but to get to that other 65%, if we don't have a lease to know that we have a tenant willing to go there, then it's, you know, a next defeat to put that on after the fact, if that makes sense.
So I guess the consequences of it not leasing by May the 30th, what happens?
It would come out. If we don't have a tenant interested in signing a lease, it would come out of the design.
And what would it be then?
It would be parking. And you still have the rooftop plaza above that sits on top of it for the condos, but it would go to parking if it wasn't restaurant. Makes sense?
Any other questions?
Mr. Taylor, on the density, just, I think I asked the same question, but I want to make sure I'm reading the same thing you're reading. I don't know if I'm just on the, from the Planning Commission, it looked like it was 64 units per acre, 64.46, maybe I'm just looking at the wrong page, but I think I asked a question, from the original to today, the density per acre was up or was down?
It went up slightly. So we, our total residential units went up by 35 between, to this plan. And so that would have went up, say roughly, you know, 17 units the acre, 15 units the acre, something like that. So I think, I think what you're probably referencing is what was in the original packet. That math would have made sense, been in the 60s versus the 78 or 79.
And how many of the hotel rooms did we get rid of? What was the original hotel size?
110.
And so we went to 30-something of the-
36 potential, yes, sir.
So really our, depending on how we count the hotel, the number of-
Yeah, that was not counted in the original density, that's right.
Would be less density per acre if we include the hotel rooms as being light living space.
Yes, sir.
That must have been what I was thinking of, okay.
All right, any more questions? All right, we need to consider on first reading ordinance 21 OZ 09.
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye. Thanks, gentlemen. All right, we'll move to rezoning approximately 116.7 acres located along Burtonob Road. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our third public hearing tonight is for the city-owned property, approximately 117 acres located along the south side of Burtonob Road, the west side of Blackman Road, and just to the north of I-840. Property is currently zoned P Park District, and the request comes from city administration to rezone this property, or to rezone 101.7 acres of it, and it's the area colored in green, from Park to CH and GDO 3. GDO 3 being the Gateway Design Overlay District number three. GDO 3 is the overlay district that we have on the city-owned property on Medical Center Parkway, where the fountains is located in that general area. CH, of course, being the Commercial Highway Zoning District. The area in yellow, which is approximately 15 acres, would be, would remain zoned Park, but the proposal is to add the GDO 3 Overlay District onto that corner. And that yellow corner is right at the southwest corner of Burtonob Road and Blackman Road. The thinking is, on this property, is the, that it is a, that it, due to its proximity to the I-840 Veterans Parkway Interchange, that it is, that its future use is best served as a center for employment generation and that the Commercial Highway Zoning District will best enable that, the development of this property with employment-generating uses. The GDO 3 Overlay District will, is a commitment to the quality of the development on this property. The, our Gateway Design Overlay District, as you know, encompasses the area along Medical Center Parkway, a good deal of Thompson Lane, and the area of the Medical Center Parkway, I-24 interchange. There are stringent design criteria. And in addition to that stringent design criteria in the Gateway Design Overlay District, there is also, there are also use restrictions. In the GDO 3 zoning district, there are more use restrictions than in any of the other GDO overlay districts. The 2035 Future Land Use Map recommends that this property develop as business park, which recommends primarily office, medical and technology and research uses, and higher-density auto-urban general residential uses and public institutional uses. The business park land use character is, supports the goal of employment-generating uses that the Commercial Highway Zoning District would enable on this property. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on April the 7th and recommended its approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have before or after the public hearing on this matter.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right, seeing none, we'll need to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Hello, Jeff Rainwater, 1129 Tiberius Way. I do want to thank council for coming out and meeting with different groups around the city to discuss this and get a feel for the sense of what's going on in the Blackman community and everything. I do want to kind of point out a few things that came out of those meetings. One is the Blackman area does not have a park, and it's one of the most densely populated areas of the city. There's been a commitment from the parks, from the city, to build a park there for almost a couple of decades now, and we haven't, we haven't seen that come to fruition. But, so, one problem we have is if you turn this into a commercial development is, where are you going to get the land for the next park? You know, you don't keep pushing it farther and farther out, the next one's out on 96. Next thing you know, you're within a few miles of Williamson County even. I mean, you're getting farther and farther out, you know, you're pushing up against urban growth boundaries, et cetera. One thing about it is unless you have a buyer on the hook, I think it's a little premature to start doing speculative rezonings. Speculative rezonings, I know have kind of gotten us in trouble with apartments and stuff like that in the past, especially the Blackman community making it a little more dense than what it probably should be in certain areas. But I want to point out that, you know, there is the need with that heavy density to have a community park here. When I say community park, I'm talking, you know, pavilions and, you know, the cheaper type park stuff where you got green space and walking trails and those kind of things. And let's keep the ideas of ballparks and ballfields and soccer fields and those things kind of separated. One is to give the density in the area the place to go play in the green space. The other one is sports for the entire city, because those are destination parks where you come from all over the city to play, because you're not guaranteed to play in your local park really necessarily. You're going to be on a team that's either here or there or there, and it's not, you know, but we do need those. I'm not saying we don't or anything, but just keep in mind that those are two separate issues as you go down this road. And I would say, you know, hold off on this, because, you know, preserve it as a park. And the only way you can preserve it and show that you're committed to the future of it is to not rezone it necessarily to commercial highway, even though I think you could probably build a park there. I'm not quite sure, I haven't looked at that. But, but you know, make the commitment to not do this until time to actually do this. And if you have a buyer on the hook and it looks an awful lot like you want to build a cupcake park, as came out of the meeting the other night, instead of a real park for the community there. So thanks for your time, and I do appreciate y'all coming out, talking to the community and everything.
Thanks, Jeff. I think it was a honey bun, is what Mr. Brady said.
What a mother bean.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Smith Walters. I retired last year from the Biology Department at MTSU and am a lifelong environmental educator. I am against the rezoning. I want to talk about that proposed Blackman-
Ma'am, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, 6209 Foothills Drive.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm against the rezone. The park placement triangulates well with sports common with Barfield. We're approximately 25 or 30 minutes from each. We don't have access to the Stones River. We don't have access to the Greenway. We don't have a place to bike, to skate, to walk, to jog, to picnic. With the explosive growth we've had west of town, we really need to think about what the future is. I'm not going to talk about environmental benefits, I'm going to talk about mental health benefits of green space. New study by NASA used satellites and demographic information to show how the prolonged presence and availability of green space is important for healthy societies. Childhood exposure to green space, parks, forests, rural lands reduces the risk for developing psychiatric disorders during adolescence and adulthood. The study has far-reaching implications for healthy cities, thinking about Murphysboro being a leader rather than a follower when it comes to green space and city planning. Research published in Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, that's the largest epidemiological study to document a positive connection between green space and mental health. Impact of green space through childhood is significant. We're not sure why, but it encourages exercise, it provides space for socializing, it decreases noise and air pollution, it filters water to increase water quality. It improves human immune function by providing exposure to beneficial microbiota. Strongest protective mechanism that green space offers is psychological restoration. All of us have spent the last year zooming with our friends and in our jobs and walking from our car to our place of employment or to the grocery. That's the green space connection we have. We need more than that, particularly for our children. Green space protects against mood disorders, depression, neurotic behavior, stress-related issues. According to the National Institutes of Health, access to green space was associated with improvemental well-being, overall health, and cognitive development in children. It promotes attention, memory, competence. It supports social groups, self-discipline. It moderates stress. It improves behaviors and symptoms of ADHD. And get this, it was even associated with higher standardized test scores. But, yeah, let's think about that for our children in Murphysboro. Effect of green space is dose-dependent, meaning those who have longer exposures have greater mental health benefits. Again, longer exposure to green space is what's important. Again, we have no access to the Greenway River or parks on the west side of town. burgeoning population, building of homes, townhomes and condos, there's greater and greater need for green space, not pocket parks, but green space. At a recent meeting at Blackman United Methodist Church, the question came up, would you rather-
Ms. Walters, I'm going to have to ask you to get to the-
I'm getting there. Would you rather have a new road across I-24 or would you rather have the park? My answer is, I don't mind driving an extra five or 10 minutes if I can have access to a place to wind down, to throw a ball, to ride my bike, to picnic, to simply swing on a playground swing. Blackman needs a park and it needs it in the location already planned for and identified. Build it in stages, build it in phases, but get it started as soon as possible. Time is overdue. Build it for our youth, build it for our senior citizens, build it for the mental health of citizens who have up until now been underserved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Ma'am, are you in the county or the city?
When I moved here 30 years ago, I had to have a map drawn by my realtor to find my house. Today, I can spit on the city limits, so I'm there. I'll be in the city within two years, I would imagine.
Alice, good to see you.
Hey, Mr. McFarland. As you guys all know, I've spoken with each of you, my name is Alice Hilton.
Alice, can I ask one favor?
Sure.
I'm not starting your time or either. Do you mind pulling the microphone down so that way we can hear you?
Yeah.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay. So I'm Alice Hilton. I live at 122 Gritten Court. That is in the county, but it is 500 feet from the property line in question. I have been talking to you guys about this for a few years now, and I actually went back and reread some reporting from 2016 when this first came to light. And in 2016, the current Director of Parks and Recs, Lanny Goodwin, said, "We need 250 acres of green space for this city." That is a direct quote from an article by Scott Broden that was published on April 21st, 2016. He said, "We need 250 acres," adding that "The city hasn't built baseball fields since opening the now at-capacity Barfield Park in 2000, on the far-south side, and soccer fields opening at the Siegel Complex in 2005." He says, "That 250 acres, that gets us just back to even." Goodwin encouraged the city council to buy even more land to be prepared to serve a city projected to add more than 100,000 people and reach a population of 228,000 by 2035. A councilman at the time, Ron Washington, made a great point. He said, "Land's not going to get any cheaper around here in this high-growth area." That's what was reported to us in the community in 2016 when the city was looking to buy the McDonald property. Another article in June 21st of 2016 by Scott Broden at the DNJ, "The City May Buy Westside Parkland." Westside Parkland. Westside Parkland. The contract for the McDonald property is $40,000 per acre, $4.9 million in total. The McDonald property is not currently located in the city limits, former city manager Lyons said. However, it's adjacent to the city. Annexation proceedings will be initiated after closing. This council came to the county, met with the residents of the county who surrounded the property and showed us at least two different times plans for parks. It was reported in the D N J, it cost taxpayers over a million dollars for that research. That zoning and annexation happened with no pushback from us. We were excited that the city was going to come and help us and provide us a park and provide us green space and help relieve some of the overcongestion we've received in that area in the last few years. That was five years ago and five years later, I'm standing here in a hearing about zoning it commercial. So when you say there's no one on the hook to buy it, why have they been out there since May, uh, 7th, working on the utilities? Since May 7th? We can see you out there. Fact, in 2000, when Barfield was complete, Murphysboro had 68,000 residents. Now in 2021, we have 58,000. Haven't added a single, 158,000, we haven't added a single acre of green space. That's 90,000. We are outpacing what Mr. Goodwin's estimate was for the future. Fact, at that time, the residents of Murphysboro each had six tenths of an acre per resident of green space. With our growth and our lack of adding green space, we're now down to seven one hundredths, a drop of over 116%. And for reference, Smyrna has 16 hundredths per acre, per resident, and Franklin has 12 one hundredths of an acre per resident.
Alice, I might have to ask you to get, your, your, your time is up, so you need to.
All right, I'm almost done.
Okay, well, make it quick.
On average, we have half of what all of our, our neighboring residents have. So you guys have issued tax permits in excess of over almost $8 million in incremental revenue? And in conclusion, promising a business park with no site plan and no buyer is insulting to our community that you came and pandered to five years ago. Building costs has tripled, that has been reported in every news outlet, and employees are working from home to help employers bring back money from COVID.
Thank you, Alice.
You can't ask us to trust you, it's offensive. If you want to build a 50 acre park.
Alice, thank you.
Show us a zoning plan for a 50 acre park.
Thank you.
Put it in writing.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing, wishing to speak? Mr. Beatty?
City Councilman John Beatty, 5104 Baker Road, uh, lifelong Blackman residence. We were excited five years ago when the park was coming out and everybody got excited. And I'm glad to know I've got a lot of people in here that are still supporting the park. Uh, the plan since y'all left Blackman Methodist Church there a couple of weeks ago, when all of you, thank all of you for coming out. But, uh, we want to see more of a plan. It was going to be more than just a little corner and 15 acres and more involved, uh, in there. And I think everybody's here tonight kind of see, uh, what the plan and kind of what you've come up with to improve more than 15 acres and make it, uh, 40 acres, 50, whatever it is. Uh, as you referred to, make it bigger than that cupcake. But, uh, we want to see some, uh, proposal. It looks like we're not going to get the, uh, uh, baseball soccer fields and all, they're moving on down Franklin Road at some time, uh, in, in a park area in the green space. Uh, but Dr. Walters was, uh, right, we have, uh, we don't have any of the, uh, rivers, anything. We do have water that floods every now and then, uh, but, uh, the residents, uh, are looking forward to a park, uh, being put in Blackman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Ms. Walters, I'm sorry, Ms. Walters, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name. I didn't get the L in there, I apologize.
It's Smith Walters, so it's not the name, so. You're going to be in a heated.
I got it, Ms. Smith Walters. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 21 OZ 10.
I have a quick question for staff. I don't know if this would be for Matt or if this would be for Sam. See Sam walking. Sam, as a council, if we wanted to put a minimum for a, a community park in the area, a minimum acre, minimum acreage, could we do that with the rezoning? If we said, for example, we want nothing to be, the park to be, it couldn't be any less than 40 or 50 acres, could we do that?
Yes, sir. Um, parks are allowed in any zoning classification in the city. Um, city staff's thoughts on, on the 15 acres was it, it shows the, the commitment to the park, uh, it shows it at this location, it reserves that space specifically for a park. But some of the, uh, thoughts we've had on, uh, the development of the property includes a, a walking trail that would need to be integrated with a development plan and other open space throughout that space. Expanding the area of the park in the corner is also a possibility and that could be done independent of the zoning. Um, we'd also be able to, um, uh, at your direction, uh, you know, offer a, a larger allocation of that corner to, to actually remain zone park. Um, I think we've got a little bit more information now that we could, we could rely on to help, um, maybe formulate that space. And looking at what the land tells us about how it wants to be developed, um, as I look at it, there, there needs to be an, an east-west road in here. In my opinion, the park boundary doesn't need to go south of that east-west road, um, for the community elements, for the pavilion, uh, the open space, uh, the parking area. Those things need to be collected and gathered and not divided by public roads. So that, that says to me, there's a natural boundary to the south. Um, the boundary to the west, um, can be, can be what it needs to be. And, and we have some, some concept plans about how the, the infrastructure would serve this area, uh, and we could use that to maybe offer up a, um, either a concept plan, concept area, or, uh, a, a, a larger area of rezoning.
Um, there was a question about, um.
Just let me clarify something on that. I'll get to your question is, so if, if we put a minimum in there, okay, could we make the commercial highway zoning conditional on that or would we need to be drawing new lines where we're specifically saying, this is where the block is, it's going to be that? You know, if we, because, I mean, as, as we kind of understood in planning commission, we can still do park in commercial highway.
Correct.
Which left that open to be sort of discovered more and explored more.
Correct.
But could we make it an actual condition in C H or would we need to draw the lines?
Yeah, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to look over to our legal counsel to ask us about this. I think, um, the conditioning, commercial highway zoning, uh, is, is probably not the right way to do that. Directing staff, uh, to, to plan for a minimum size of park space in the commercial highway zoning, uh, would be a, a direction to staff that we'd bring back to you for consideration. Changing the zoning boundary is something that we could, that you could ask and we could propose that before second reading.
I would agree with, with Mr. Huddleston's statement there in terms of the, the best way approach it legally.
So I just want to expand on that and then you go ahead and then we'll go back to this.
No, 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 go ahead. I, I just was going to try to get some of the questions answered.
Go ahead.
Utilities?
Yes, and so, um, this, this region of our community, we know is high demand, but this property in Veterans Parkway is currently underserved, underserved with utilities. Utility companies have been planning for, uh, for some time now to, to make improvements out there. Atmos Energy, uh, is trying to make a connection along Burnob Road, that's the work you see going today. I have a proposal, uh, later in the agenda, um, to, to complete a water line extension across this property, all of which needed, are needed, uh, for the development of this property and the other properties along Veterans Parkway. Um, and then we also know that Middle Tennessee Electric and their fiber provider, um, they're working to, to bring, uh, data capabilities in from the west to supplement and provide alternate, um, alternate data sources, fiber sources, uh, to the other two that provide primarily our, our, um, fiber in the city. And I'll also, um, add to you that, that this body and the Water and Sewer Board approved a, uh, pump station design contract sometime back and we're pursuing that pump station design now, uh, to make sure this property is served with sewer.
Okay. Mr. Lance?
Oh, well, I, just to build on this, I mean, I guess I was kind of trying to think about, you know, in, in addition to just staff, directing staff, you know, I mean, if we kind of extended this, if we extended the highlighted piece out to the, you know, west, northwest, or whatever that would be right there, you know, and had like a, a minimum number that we kind of knew would be, whether that be a, you know, 25 acres in the actual block and then to give, you know, 25 or 30 or whatever we kind of come to and then, and then continue to give staff direction that we still want to add park space as we go through whatever development comes. That way we kind of increase the, the bare minimum that we know has to be rezoned, go through the public hearing process again, if ever, you know, if any future council did that. Um, and also still try to beef it up more than that number, knowing that we can do it. Certainly would be.
Yes.
Willing to do something like that.
Let, let me offer just a, a, um, some information on that. Um, the, and one of the concepts that we've, uh, has been in our program since the very beginning is, uh, is walking trails. Um, this area, just the perimeter of this site would support about a mile and a half of walking trail. Uh, when you consider the width of that corridor and that length, that's, that's about four and a half to five acres, uh, of walking trail that would provide some of what we've talked about today as, as far as an amenity package, that would be, uh, that would be available to the, um, to the area. Um, and, and that would be outside of the area that is currently, uh, proposed to remain zone park. But that gives you the magnitude of, of what kind of space and separate, or space requirements we would generate, really just from a very simple, uh, walking trail corridor around the perimeter of the property.
Mr. Williams, there was a, um, I think Ms. Hilton had some information on comparable cities, Smyrna, Laverne, to parks, but I, I wanted to get information from you that, you know, there was a, I saw a post that said we only had 700 acres of park property in Murphysboro. I think it'd be appropriate to you give us the information of what we actually have that's accurate.
We've been working on some of that data.
You talking to the microphone? We can't hear you.
Mayor, we've been working on some of that data and we have some of that. Um, I don't want to throw out everything just because kind of we're honing that in. I can say we've got over 1,300 acres of dedicated park space at this moment. So, uh, those numbers aren't wrong, but I mean, we do have a, if you could do comparisons of, I mean, Knoxville, Nashville, Chattanooga, uh, were comparable in trail miles, were comparable in a lot of things, especially operating budget and staff. We have a total of 331 employees, uh, that serve just a wide range of offerings throughout the city. So I can prepare that and give that to you, Mayor. Uh, we're working on that right now, just for comparables.
Thank you, Nick.
The comment that I'd make is that, you know, this is, we see this as a valuable piece of property because of its location and, uh, there, there's an economic value to that location, but there's other considerations. I, I, I would support a lot larger, significantly larger park space dedication, uh, to this area, passive recreation, which would include, uh, walking trails, but other things that, um, amenities that might be enhanced. I've had a conversation about some things, uh, I don't think you'd be surprised to know that, uh, conversation came up at Blackman about library in that particular area and had some conversation with folks about, uh, that how attractive a park space and a library makes both very successful. And it's a salable amenity to the economic opportunity that might be here as well. Uh, so I'd rather, I think we're, we, we need to give, uh, our staff a little more direction to clarify what could and might be some of the opportunities with this space rather than, uh, you know, proceeding with just a 15 acre slide. You know, with the 15 acre site, we were saying, well, we want to have a economic, uh, development component of this, but remember, remember we're thinking about park. But what, what does, precludes us to do just the opposite? To say, here is a significant commitment to a park and if that economic opportunity comes forward, then we can reconfigure. I mean, Mr. Huddleston, is that, I mean, that can be considered just with the other priority? Or candid?
Yes, certainly, uh, Councilman Shacklet, looking at it that way is, is certainly, um, a, a way to view, uh, the commitment of the mayor and council on, on the park to this area.
In other words, instead of holding a spot for the park, hold a spot for potential economic development and increase the amenity package with what we have for that to be even more attractive.
Let's, uh, and maybe if I gave you some insight into staff's thinking, how we, how we looked at, at 15 acres. Uh, some of our, um, best community park spaces, um, the Case and Trailhead, uh, which is connected to a, a Greenway or walking trail and has, has the river there, so it's, uh, but a lot of the amenities that we have at Case and Trail, I believe that's on seven and a half acres. It, it's one of our highest utilized park assets as far as, uh, intensity and headcount. Um, you, you look at, uh, the Oakland's area and the Oakland's Park, uh, there with the mansion and the, the, uh, Manny Springs, that's about 20 acres, uh, not counting the mansion, which is, which is privately held. Um, and so those were the things that gave us some thought about how much community space we need to program here. Uh, and I, I think, um, spending some time making, uh, some planning decisions on the park elements would help us fine tune this. And then maybe if I had a recommendation to the council would be to direct, um, staff to, to, uh, bring you back a, um, a programming, um, statement about what park elements would go here, what those typical space requirements are. And then let's see if we can, um, you know, identify those and locate those on this, on this property and make a decision about how much of this to remain park, um, makes sense from that programming standpoint.
Well, Ma, does that mean just put a pause on the rezoning then?
Yes, I, I think, I mean, I think we're, we're fine to, um, to put this on hold for, um, a few weeks to give staff time to, um, uh, you know, to review this. Uh, we have a, um, a consultant that, that spent a good bit of time on this property who's, who's ready to help with that, our Parks and Rec staff, city administration, we're ready to, to, to dive into this, uh, to bring you back a proposal, uh, the amenities that, that might go there, um, and, and looking at the space allocations. Because the question is, to me, the question is not how big is the park, but what's in the park and then how much space does that need?
Makes sense.
You know, another thing. Go ahead, Ron. I've just got general comments, I don't have anything specific for Sam. You have something for Sam? Okay. Go ahead. Um, so I, I would probably lean somewhat towards, uh, Councilman Shacklet's view on this, but, you know, the, the thing that's challenging to me about this, um, just generally speaking, is, um, I think what prompted us to look at this was a unique opportunity we had coming to our community. And so as I understand it, that opportunity doesn't exist today. So, you know, you ask yourself the question, why would we do that if that opportunity does not exist today? Well, there's an answer to that because if we don't create certain opportunities, then maybe that hurts us the next time that opportunity comes. And so I can probably get on board with that in the sense that, um, you know, does it make sense to be nimble and prepared and, you know, pad ready, site ready to do something? Yeah, I could probably get on board with that. The challenge is, where I struggle is to give the majority of the site over to a possibility that doesn't exist today. And I, and I understand there's a good argument that, you know, we would get to view the site plan and, you know, it can be mixed use and there's lots of trails and all that sounds great, but we could also do half the site and put all the utilities in and say, we've got a 75 acre site that can be used for our corporate headquarters and it's the, you know, three times the size of what else we have to, that we have to offer. So let's do everything and put that there and, and we're not necessarily saying that means we're going to have the rest in park space. But, I mean, if we do not have a need for 100 acres. rest in park space. But, I mean, if we do not have a need for a 100 acre site, why would we give it over to, why would we rezone the whole thing to that, or at least the majority of the property for that? And the other piece to that, that's, that's a little tough for me, and I've, I've said this. You know, the Blackman Park site was stalled because of the cost. We had sticker shock to that. The lady that spoke that was in Foothills, you know, whether your city or county matters, but at the same time, I wouldn't argue that we need a site because the spirit of what we said originally was, we were going to build a park there. So, I mean, I think there's some commitment and some integrity that we've got to maintain about doing that. The reality is, Barfield's five miles from there. So, it's not like we don't have green space. It's not like you can't access that site. And, and for me, because the park development was not in our, what I'm going to call five year plan, it was kind of outside of that, in our CIP, I would rather continue to make the commitment to infrastructure and roads, which I know we need, and I'm not suggesting that we don't need the park space, that, that's not the argument. It would be more of a priority for me. I would not want to be forced into spending dollars on a park today that we really hadn't planned to spend dollars on, when what we had been talking about was infrastructure, catching up, building roads, and catching up from some of the things that, that we've needed to do. So, you know, I would be for a smaller park on this site. I would also be for a larger park on the 96 site. But I'm going to be one that's going to want to defer all of that for a certain period of time in preference of roads and infrastructure. But, to go back to my, to sort of dovetail into Councilman Shacklet's point, if we do not have an immediate need and a buyer for this, I don't know why we would give the entire project over in one rezoning. Or in my mind, essentially, the entire project over.
Yeah, and I, you know, I want to speak for Sean, but from a planning commission standpoint, I think, you know, the thing that sort of made that feel a little easier was the fact that I kind of, I kind of felt like I knew that I expected it to be bigger than 15 acres all the way back then. But the fact that you can by right, put park in that commercial highway space, kind of made me feel a little bit more comfortable with that. But, you know, I, look, I'm perfectly fine doing that. I think it is true, what you're saying, which is, you know, what we hear from economic development partners all the time, is you have to have something ready. And, you know, who's to say we didn't miss out a little bit on the one that we kind of thought was in the, you know, in the site, so to speak, because we had to go through this process, and because we didn't have something ready at the time. So, you know, I'm, I'm certainly, look, this is simple, too. I mean, there's, there's not no reason why we're doing this. Isn't, you know, money is a, is a, is an extremely valid reason why we are trying to figure out the best place to do which area. You know, we've got the Franklin Highway spot, we've got this spot. You know, I, I'm clearly willing to lock up more. I don't know what the right number is. You know, is it 75? Is it, is it 90? Is it 60? I, I don't know. I'll tell you, I, I think it would be extremely important for us to, to get some of this rezoned fairly soon, and that's part of that pain I'm willing to take, to try to leave our doors open to attract good jobs here. We know this is a corridor for that. We all know that's a layup, right? I mean, that's, we know this. So, I mean, I, but then again, I've always expected it to be bigger, bigger than 15 acres, so I'm, I'm good with however we want to do it. I mean, it's simple. My simple math would just be to take that southern line of that highlighted area, and just take it all the way over there to that RS 15 piece of property right there, and see what that number looks like. And it, and that's a bare minimum, right? It buffers Burntob?
Well, to me, it's planning, and good planning is to get what I think Sam was talking about.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
To get, to task the people that are going to come, and Nate, to come up with the ideas, what amenities that are going to provide the kind of passive, you know, we're not talking about ball fields, we're not, you know, talking about picnic pavilions and walking paths and stuff like that, passive recreational opportunities in a park. What kind of space does that require? And, and what is?
I'm good with it. I'm good with that.
And tasking them, and then let them come back with us as to what that requirement is. Then we can consider the zoning.
I, I want to be clear to the neighbors, city and county, whatever, and, and from our standpoint, you know, we've been getting punished for getting options to build a park on the west side of town. I mean, we, we've made a commitment. We've spent some number of millions of dollars on property, both here and at another place, and we've spent lots of man hours. Nate and his, and Angela and them have spent untold numbers of, of hours trying to figure out different, you know, nuances and reasons why we could do this here and there, and we've, you know, and we're getting drilled. I'm a little afraid that if we, if we do end up leaving some number there, that we're going to run into this same thing again. And frankly, I don't want to, you know, the only reason that I, I'm a little hesitant on this, I don't want to pass this off for too very long at all, because I don't want it to be like, well, we didn't vote on it, and we left it out there in the open, and then, you know, some, some meeting six weeks from now, when nobody's here, we do whatever it is we're going to do. I, I, I don't want it to look like that. So, I'm just telling people that right now. If we want to defer it, I'm totally good with it. Let's get some ideas from council, I mean, from staff. But I will tell you, I think it'd be very important for us to have some level of this be available quickly for economic development. It's, it's some level, right, once we kind of tap into the, tap into the park space. And I want to be sure to make note, too, I mean, I, I don't know, the map's not up there, but, you know, the commercial highway zoning that's right on the corner of Veterans and Vaughn on both sides, all the way up to Burntob Road, I want to clarify for everybody who's listening, that is not city owned property. So, we, we did make, you know, we did take some steps to try to limit what could be put on those spaces when that was zoned into the city. And so, we've, we've also, tonight after this meeting, will consider putting a GDO on that, which the Planning Commission has done, which is a pretty big deal to do to a landowner, to tell them they have to meet a certain standard, right, and a developer. So, I think, you know, I'm, I'm good with it. I'm, I'll shut up, but that's, that's kind of where I'm, where I'm at on it. You want me to make a motion?
You can, or I can? Either one?
I'd be glad to. Do we need a motion? Yeah, Kurt, go ahead.
For deferral?
What are you?
Wait, were you, you got something?
Are you going to defer?
Yeah. I don't know if we even need to. Do we need to defer it, I guess?
Probably do, yeah. Yeah, I would think so.
I would think you, you could either, you know, vote to defer it. You, I mean, I think you have, this is first reading. You have a couple options. You can...
I'm not going to, I don't want to do first reading and then wait. Y'all?
Okay.
Y'all, y'all want to prove it on first reading and go back to?
Depends on what we're doing.
Yeah, I don't, what were you, you want to say something?
No, no. I, I was just going to see if you were going to defer. And if not, I got a comment.
I was going to defer, because that's what I thought everybody wanted to do.
You know, although, some of the, I'll see Alice over there. Although, I don't agree with all the comments. I, I think I'm fine deferring, but we need to make sure that when we discuss this again, that, you know, it's publicized, and let everyone know that we're going to be discussing it. I just don't want to defer it, and, you know, and we have a discussion on it at a workshop, where I guess I'm just saying to staff that this needs to be on, you know, a Thursday night meeting, that we can have people, we can have people come, you know, come to listen to what our, our decision, our comments are going to be.
The public hearing portion of this consideration is already through.
Yeah, it'd be over.
You, you could defer it to a date certain, if, if, you know, if, whether that was two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks.
Do they have to set a date?
You don't have to, but I was saying, in terms of just making it...
Would we, would everyone be okay if we, because we'll have a public comment section on June the 3rd, if we deferred this to?
Yeah, well, no, June 3rd should be okay.
Or the 17th.
When's our, we don't have any new public hearings.
We've got, we've got our second reading on the budget will be June the 3rd, correct?
Are we scheduling public hearings tonight?
The, the second reading on the budget was most likely going to be at the Wednesday workshop in June.
Are we going, are we scheduling public hearings tonight?
Yes, sir.
What's your estimated date for that?
June 24th.
There you go. So, that's when we'll already have public hearings? That gives staff, does that sound, June 24th is a month likely enough time to?
That's right. I got a comment. I think we, we've been through this process long enough to know that we actually need to build a park on the west side. I think we all know that that's prime property. We don't want to give it all away, but we want to make sure that there's a park on the west side. One of my motions I'll make, I won't make this motion, but I'll make another one eventually, is that we put in budget to build a park, start a park on the west side this year. We have committed, we overcommitted, and that's something that we shouldn't have done. And I'll be the first to say, we, we had people draw plans up, we did the whole nine yards, but we didn't know the cost was going to be so high. Shame on us for doing that, but we, they do deserve a park, and we need to start putting the shovels in the ground. And so, I, I just want to say, let's, let's get this ball rolling, let's get this process rolling. At one time, we didn't have the money. But we do know that it's going to be a smaller park, and we have 96 to put ball fields. So, I do think we need to make that commitment and stick with, stick to it.
Councilman Wade, can I ask you a question? Are you referring to this site, whatever it is, at 15, 25, 40, doing something here? Are you talking about the other? Are you talking?
I want to start with the property on 840. Yeah. And, and that's why I want council, staff to come back with, what are the amenities that you're trying to put in there? We know 15 acres is not big enough. With that area, it's the fastest growing area in, in our city. 15 acres is not big enough.
Well, I, I will just make this comment. Jeff Rainwater, and I don't know if he's still here or not.
Yeah, he is.
He made a great point, from the standpoint, when we were in Blackman, you don't have to build, sorry, that you don't have to build a 50 million, 45, $50 million facility. And, and obviously, with what we're talking about, whether it's 15 acres or 40 acres, you couldn't do that anyway. So, I, I will make the comment that if we were talking about doing something scaled down, scaled down, green space, I'd be totally fine with that, too.
I mean, and not many people know this. Our, probably one of our best, most underutilized parks in the city of Murfreesboro is Rogers Park. It's probably the, the best community park that no one goes to. And so, you know, I don't know what the acreage is on that park, but Nate, Nate, how big is Rogers Park, Nate? It's not very... Yeah, so, I mean, I think that, that when, quantity is not as good as quality. And so, just saying that we're going to have a 40 or 50 acre park and not doing anything with it, I think we've, the only time I ever get frustrated is for someone to say that the city of Murfreesboro is, has, is a D in Parks and Recreation, when you look at where we are comparable to Knoxville, to Chattanooga. I mean, our budgets are higher than Knoxville, our budgets are higher than Chattanooga, we have more acreage than Knoxville, we have more acreage than Chattanooga. Bill and I are routinely at the ball field parks, what, at least two or three times, two nights a week, and we never hear people complaining about our Parks and Recreation system or greenway. Now, I, I will agree, complaining that we don't have enough of them. But, you know, I don't think we'll ever have enough parks, parks in Murfreesboro. And, and if we get to that point, then that means that it's a good thing. So, I, I agree with Kurt on saying, you know, on the, the 840 site. I also think we've not built, as it was quoted by Scott Broden in the Daily News Journal, we've not built, built parks since 1998 or 99 in the Barfield area for athletic complexes. And so, that's going to have to be a discussion as well. But, I think that's...
You going to make the motion, Rick?
No, not like that. You know, look, the...
I make a motion that we defer this...
Till June 24th?
June 24th. Motion's second. Second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Leland.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
We've deferred this till June the 24th. All right, we now have a rezoning approximately 52.9 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our last land use public hearing tonight is kind of a companion request to the, to the one that we just considered. This is for five parcels located along Veterans Parkway and Burntob Road.
No, it's not.
That are currently in the city limits, three of which are already zoned commercial highway, and two of which are zoned RS 15. In the spirit of, of promoting high quality development in the, along this interchange of Veterans Parkway and 840, City Administration brought forth a request to zone these five parcels to GDO 1, that's Gateway Design Overlay District Number 1. The GDO, the current GDO 1 is the area of the GDO 1, or the area of the GDO that is in the vicinity of the avenue, the, the development that is occurring between Thompson Lane and, and I-24 on Medical Center Parkway. The GDO 1 not only has increased design standards to enhance the quality of the development, I think you can see that Ms. Green and, and the planning department has worked extremely hard over the, over the last 15, 20 years, since the Gateway Design Overlay District was adopted, to ensure that the, that design was of the, of the highest level of quality in the Gateway Design Overlay District. And it was staff's intention to bring that high, high level of quality to any commercial development that is to occur at this, at this interchange on these properties. In addition to the, the design regulations that are included in the Gateway Design Overlay District, the GDO 1 also has use restrictions that, as do all of the Gateway Design Overlay District, all four of the Gateway Design Overlay Districts. So, uses that are permitted by right in the Commercial Highway Zoning District, some will not be permitted if this is, if the Gateway Design Overlay District is put over these properties. Two of these properties are zoned RS 15. They're the Carter Properties. It's actually Mr. Carter's house lot, as well as a parcel that contains his driveway. So, that's really, even though it's two parcels, it's really, it's really one. And then there is the, the Jay and Properties parcel, which is a, a single family rental home that was annexed and zoned Commercial Highway with the intentions of redevelopment. And then there is the Togri Property here, purchased with the intention of development, and the Swanson Property here, directly across the street from the Togri Property. Both of those properties are already zoned Commercial Highway. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on April the 7th, and recommended its approval. This will not change the existing base zoning of the properties, but it would add the GDO 1 overlay on top. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after our public hearing on this matter.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
I got a question. It's, going back to the, what we just left, I know it was on our agenda altogether. Is it possible for us to include the other piece of property that we just discussed, to add this, or to, to vote on that, to add it to the GDO 3, rather than just the rezoning piece? Can we, can we do the GDO piece without the rezoning piece? I know we deferred the, the rezoning, but that was a question I was about to ask before, Bill.
In my opinion, it would probably be cleaner to, since it was all advertised as one with the GDO 3 and the CH, to bring that back all as one, as one first reading on June 24th. Mr. Tucker?
I would, I would agree. There were two separate ordinances, went through two separate paths, the Planning Commission, and I think it'd be difficult to cut and paste now.
Yeah, I want to make sure, so on this rezoning request, ultimately what we're doing is, we're restricting these, the current, the existing zoning, we're restricting even further than what we did when we did the rezoning, which we eliminated truck stops, liquor stores, all those different things. So, I want to make sure it's not a rezoning to add, it's making it more restrictive.
That's correct. And all of those, whatever restrictive covenants have been committed to by the, by the property owners, or the former property owners, at the time of the initial rezoning, those restrictive covenants will remain with the property. This will add some more regulatory restrictions enforceable by the city, on top of whatever private restrictions are on the property right now.
All right. We need to hold a public hearing for this rezoning request for 52.9 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Mayor and members of the council, my name's John Harney. I live at 6748 Westgum Road. I'm here tonight representing the Togri property, which is the 30 acres that, if the map was back up there, basically will end up being the front door to the property in discussion that the city owns. The Togri family understands this puts a novel level of commitment by them to the quality of their property being raised, and they're in agreement to do that. They're also excited about the possibility of the 125 acres of the city property being mixed use, not only a park, but having opportunities for corporate headquarters, tech parks, that sort of thing. But what I can tell you is, in my business, where I've represented a lot of the properties in the Gateway, and there at the exit 80, New Salem Highway, and a couple of other parks at Joby Jackson, the first thing site selection companies that call us ask, does it have all the utilities, and is it properly zoned? You won't even get on a short list for a lot of the white collar companies that are looking for sites, corporate headquarters, you won't even make it to the short list to be presented to that company unless the zoning and the utilities are in place. And I think Councilman Lance and Councilman Martin both are right. You've got to have the infrastructure, you've got to have the utilities there. But every big company's got a story about, we were induced to go to such and such city, we waited a year trying to get the rezoning, and then it blew up. So what I would urge you is, don't kick the can too far down the road, getting some of this entitled, so we can get a good look at some of these companies that will bring good white collar jobs. And I think it's been, already been said or answered by Mr. Holston, just because it's zoned CH doesn't mean that can't be park. But the reverse can't happen. If it's park, nobody can build a corporate headquarters on it. So I'd urge you, come June 24th, to try to get something empowered, so that the next time somebody comes, we've got a good shot at getting good jobs, which I think we all want, and we all want good parks as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harney.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. I am Cara Kirk, speaking on behalf of Swanson Developments, the Swanson-owned property across the street, and speaking on behalf of Joe Swanson Jr., my uncle, at 1188 Park Avenue in Murfreesboro. We are beginning to transition some things to the next generation of our family, especially concerning properties that the next generation will be making decisions on, like this one, however long that may be, 15, 20 years, who knows. But if I may briefly share where I'm personally coming from concerning this property, my family moved here to Murfreesboro in 1963. My grandfather, Joe Swanson Sr., began our real estate business when we built 803 Park Avenue in 1968. The business has grown to service our community with over 3 million square feet in buildings and hundreds of acres for future businesses in middle Tennessee, primarily in Murfreesboro. This vaun property, as we call it in-house, this vaun property you would like to place the GDO-1 overlay on, was purchased with the existing CH zoning with intent for future development by my future, or by my generation, to further service the community. Our family has worked with the city of Murfreesboro for many years through all the growth and the changes and the added requirements. I think it's fair to say, our family has a longstanding positive history with the city of Murfreesboro, and has a proven track record of providing quality developments and selling land to reputable companies. I understand the purpose of the GDO-1 overlay for the city's vision and desire for this area. However, I do believe property owners should be able to maintain a legal right to their property and have the ability to choose if additional restrictions are placed on their property. The city of Murfreesboro has design guidelines already in place that enhance the restrictions and the designing of the current commercial highway zoning in specific ways. So I must stand behind my beliefs and respectfully request that if this is deferred and brought up again, that the city of Murfreesboro does not add the GDO-1 overlay to our vaun property, which would take away certain permitted use, permitted uses in the commercial highway zoning that are zoned by Wright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Tiffany Williams. I am Joe Jr.'s daughter, so I'm speaking on behalf of Swanson Companies and Joe, who's living it up at the beach right now. So Cara, myself, and Joe, three are going to be here. So we are at 1188 Park Avenue here in Murfreesboro, and thank you for the opportunity and the platform to stand up here and talk about our opinion on this. We purchased this property as commercial highway many years ago, with the intent of our generation of family members to develop it. GDO-1 definitely has its advantages, and I understand why the city would want to put this here. As someone who lives on the west side of town, I get it, and it looks great. However, I believe the commercial highway zoning it currently has broadens the usage, therefore allows more companies to come in and bring their business into Murfreesboro. I believe Swanson Companies, as a long-term Murfreesboro resident, has a reputation for producing developments that enhance and bring value to our community. So I also respectfully request that you do not add a GDO-1 overlay to this property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Joe III, Joe Swanson III, at 1188 Park Avenue. I'd like to thank you again for this time to come and speak. As a property owner developer in this community, I'm opposed to the additional overlay for this property. Not only will this overlay add additional time, but additional cost in an already overinflated market that has to be passed along to an end user. More than likely, whatever tenant, whoever comes to purchase the land, they're not necessarily going to be focused on the look of the building, but what the bottom line is, how much it's going to cost them. The property was purchased with the CH zone already, adding this additional overlay only again as additional expense, as additional time in planning. So in saying this, I have to strongly be opposed to the GDO-1 overlay for this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading order, it's 21, Oz 11.
The reason I asked, the question I asked earlier was the, just, really kind of the idea of whether or not we should wait to do this simultaneous, we, you know, if we're not, I wouldn't, I still know that I'd feel real comfortable doing this when we're not going to do it on the city-owned property at the same time. I, it's not, I don't know if it really matters that much. I'm just kind of, it just hit, it just hit me that way, so that's why I brought it up. If it's going to be a month down the road, I don't.
The city property, we're doing GDO-3, not 1, though, right?
Well, that's true. Just the GDO.
The GDO-3.
Yeah.
GDO-3 is going to be much more restrictive than GDO-1.
I just hate for us to get this. I mean, I think we're all committed to doing GDO-3 on our property.
Yeah.
But I hate to leave it open out there and put Gateway, I don't know. I just, I'm committed to doing it, I'm fine with it, because I know how, I'll vote when the time comes. But I don't know how the rest of the council will, so.
I would have a question for staff, since the other property owners, I know Mr. Harney spoke, that, Mr. Togri, what, microphone, sorry. Mr. Harney has spoken for Mr. Togri, who's in support of the rezoning and the GDO, but with the Swanson family here, what would the impact be if we removed that parcel from the Swanson family, or the rezoning for the GDO for the Swanson family and left the rest of it intact? I know we probably have to redo some of this, but just a question, based on staff's intent.
Yeah, I think the impact is perhaps incongruous or inharmonious development on both sides of Veterans Parkway. I think that you have, you know, and I don't know what Swanson's development intentions are, or if at some point they intended to sell the property, it could change hands. But the GDO-1 offers protections against certain land uses, and there were a list of land uses in the GDO-1 that are prohibited, that are included in your agenda packet, highlighted from our zoning ordinance. So I think you're setting a certain expectation of quality on one side of the road that might not be on the other side of the road, that might create an inharmonious development pattern. And so I think that, that would be the primary reason you're trying to set a trend, and this was, this was the same thing that back in 2004, 2005, and I'm dating myself here, it was, there were property owners who came before council in 2004, 2005, it was a long time ago. Mr. McFarland, you probably remember, I think you were on Planning Commission at that time, and I think there were, there were property owners who really questioned being put in the Gateway Design Overlay District and what that might mean to them, the additional regulations that that might add to them. And I think that, that what we've seen over the last 15 years, it has been a great success, a great boon to our community, and that, and that the properties that have been included in it have been, have been very, very successful. So I think that it's, as staff, we would, if you're considering taking property out of this request, you know, just think about what that would set the, this particular corridor up for in the future, you know, 10, 15 years from now.
On the properties, the Vanderbilt property, that zoning, what's the, is it under GDO?
It's commercial highway, and we particularly, we, because of the proximity of these parcels to the city-owned property, and it was our intent to include the GDO-3 on the city-owned property, we felt this would be a good starting point for the Gateway Design Overlay District at this interchange, to have the properties that were in closest proximity to the city-owned property to create a development pattern, kind of a synergy between the properties.
The reason why I ask, didn't we, when the McDonald, McDonald property came through, didn't we put restrictions on them, that they, on deed restrictions? I think Mr. Reed may have done it, that they, they agreed to, basically it was a GDO standard by eliminating several of the uses that was in commercial highway, like truck stops and.
I want to say that they restricted about seven or eight uses. Several of the other properties, I think, for example, the, I believe there were restrictions put on the Jayen properties, there on the corner. I think there was a more extensive list of restrictions on that property. But, but a number of the properties that have come in, restrictions have been put on, including the former Horde property, which was later purchased by Togri and by Swanson. So there are already some restrictions, but this would add an extra layer. And some of the uses that would be prohibited in, in the GDO-1, for example, are, are commercial outdoor amusements, packaged beer stores, carnivals, communications towers, contractors' outdoor storage, crematories, drive-in theaters, retail ice, kennels, self-service laundries, pawn shops, pet crematories, tattoo parlors, taverns, which is a bar, wrecker service and wrecker service storage yard. So those are some of the uses, the majority of the ones that I just named are permitted in the commercial, the base commercial highway zoning right now.
Last question I have is for the Swansons. Did y'all buy the property before or after Veterans Parkway was built? Do you remember? After Veterans Parkway?
I believe they purchased it after, because Veterans Parkway was constructed when the property was, was annexed and zoned, when the Horde zoned it.
Okay.
So I have a question for Matthew, or somebody else might be able to answer it. At the Planning Commission, Joe Swanson Jr. spoke and wasn't quite as, either straightforward or negative about the, I mean, he wasn't positive about it, but he frankly wasn't saying, "I strongly object to this. It may be a generational difference in ownership" or whatever. I don't mean in any other way, other than ownership. But one of the things that he said at that time, and I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't know what he was talking about, was that there was some other property that was owned in that area that he was sort of concerned about.
I believe that, where I've drawn the X, I believe that they own that property as well, and they're nodding in agreement. That, that property where the X is, is currently in the unincorporated county.
County.
Can you bring that, can you bring that up on the?
I can't, but I think the cable department can. There we go. The area with the green X is, is also owned by Swanson. It's currently in the county. They may or may not have intentions to have that annexed and zoned or development within the city. I can't answer that.
I would, my only comment was, would be, the likelihood of the CH, that the CH that we're talking about next to the X, that's the Swanson property currently, right?
Inside the X.
Inside, yeah, not, next to the.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Next to the unincorporated. My only thought would be, and I may be wrong on this, but that property is going to be tough to develop standalone without bringing in the other property. You know, there's just not the depth to be able to hit parking, landscaping, so, you know.
I suspect that's why the issue.
Yeah, so I, you know, if the other property's going to come in, I would say to the Swanson family, we're going to be very consistent on what we've required all the other people in that area to do, which we have for the last four or five years said, all the uses that you said is, they're not permitted. I mean, we've made people deed restrict their property to do that. So, you know, that's, when that zoning comes in, whether it be GDO-1 or not, we've been very consistent, even the property that Mr. Togri bought, that we said, no truck stops, no storage, no warehouse. So that, you know, I think that the argument may be mute, because we're going to require it anyway, whether it's GDO-1 or not, so.
And we did it on the other side of 842.
We've done it in that whole corridor for the last five or six years. We, West Lawn did that, even the Vanderbilt property, when that was being talked about. So it's all restricted, maybe not by GDO-1, but it's deed restricted in what, when it came through on the zoning.
I think the, one of the main differences is, is that if it's, if it is zoning, restricted by zoning, is that from a city standpoint, we have, we have additional teeth to enforce.
Yeah, so, so here's my thoughts on this, is that I, I think that the things that he listed, and I don't know that I know all of them, but I think I'm making more sense of this, because I did say, in the Planning Commission level, to Joe Jr., that I would keep an open mind. I think what he specifically said was, I'd ask you to keep an open mind on the, on the other piece of property. It was something very similar to that statement, if not that exactly. And I am willing to keep an open mind, you know, especially once you get off of veterans. But it seems to me like, with what Shane, you know, what we're talking about here and what he's saying, we have been consistent. You know, we've all talked about the vision for this whole area out here, and we've got a lot of, a lot of place to do some really cool things, make it a really cool part of Murfreesboro, and probably one of the best parts of Murfreesboro. And, you know, it could always be a PUD. You know, that other piece of property could always be a PUD, and not, you know, as long as it, you know.
The skinny piece of property is only 220 feet deep, so by the time you figure rear setback and front setback, and then you figure parking, you don't have much room to put a building on there anyway, unless it's just going to be a shotgun strip center. And so it's going to be hard to meet anything under our current design guidelines and what we've required of everyone else on that corridor, to meet that on that narrow of a piece of property, anyway.
I think our thought was that they would need at least a portion of the property to the rear to make that a viable property.
I think I remember this from maybe this other corner property up to the north of the Togri property. But is a beer package store, is that something completely different than a convenience store, or C-store, or whatever, a gas station that sells beer? Is that a separate?
I think, I think.
Beer and tobacco, kind of?
A packaged beer store would be where the predominant trade that they engage in is, is the sale of beer. I mean, they could sell other things, other various sundries, but as opposed to a convenience store where that would not make up the majority of their, of their stock and trade.
It can't be developed anyway. It can't be developed anyway. All right, council, what would you like?
I'm going to make a motion, we approve it.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
No.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to planning commission recommendation to schedule public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We have several to schedule tonight. I think y'all made it easy on me, June 24th.
All right, do we have a motion to schedule public hearings on June 24th?
So move, second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into fiscal year 22 budget matters. We have the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 22 city budget. This is administration. We need to conduct a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 22 budget. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll please come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Matt Young. I live at 703 North Church Street. I think everybody knows who I am. Start talking about the budget this year. I'm glad that the class comp study's in there. Dad's last council meeting. He voted, he made a motion that we have a class comp study. We have never received that. That was November 2016. How was his last thing he did was saying, hey, I want this. Previous city management? It never happened. We never got that. We've got a new city manager now, we've got a new HR director, very blessed, can't brag as much as I want to about our HR department, how awesome they are now and how a breath of fresh air it truly is. So commend the staff on that, thank you. But we are so far behind, it's unbearable. I know the chief has done a phenomenal job, hats off to him for trying to get it moved forward, and he, he updated it a bunch. But mayor, you talked about Burris and Associates. Franklin used Burris and Associates. Franklin's $8,000 higher than we are. We just never follow what Burris and Associates did. MAG, MAG was, we didn't, we didn't take the first MAG study, we took the second one, which was a lot less. MAG talked about paying for college education. You know, my dad raised me, son, if you go work hard, you go get a degree, you'll make more money. Not at the city of Murfreesboro, but Hendersonville, they pay 5% if you've got a bachelor's. Nashville does, Franklin does. Those are the reasons why we're not competitive. And those are issues that y'all can fix and things that y'all can put in that class comp study. As an employee, you know, especially with what went on the last time, there's a lot of us that don't trust the class comp study because we never got to see it. We were all there for MAG. And several of us, several of y'all know, when MAG came into town, we were all there and we packed the house. Every time they had a hearing and a meeting, we were there for it. But the second, when, when we didn't take, use MAG, when we came back the second time, we never saw that. And mayor, I'm pretty sure you kind of remember that we had one and we never got the study. I mean, that's, that's an absolute fact. So as an employee, it makes us doubt trust. Now, I want to believe the city and with our, our new HR director, Pam, she does a phenomenal job, so I truly believe, believe she has our best interest to city employees. But I just ask that, that this new class comp study, that there's true transparency from the top to the bottom. And that's all I ask. I mean, I can't put the numbers in there, I can't make the numbers, but all I ask of you is to give us a fair shot at that. Let us see the transparency in that. That's the only thing that's fair. Please can, you know, we can't be Nashville, I understand that. I'm not asking to be Nashville. They're major league, but we can play AAA, we don't have to be the farm leagues. You know, let's, let's be close. You know, if they're $10,000 higher, we need to be $2,000 less, not $9,000 less on starting salaries. We can't, it's so hard when, as a supervisor, my subordinates come and go. I can't keep them trained up quick enough, and we're not in the position to just keep training people and keep training people. We operate as a highly coordinated team to save lives. If I have new people in every day, we don't function as a team. It's so hard. It's not fair to us. And I truly ask for y'all to really look at that and take a hard look at that because we are the frontline people out there. When your day goes wrong and you call 911, where who comes? So I just ask that in this budget, that the class comp study, that y'all make an honest effort to look at everything, adding education in there, increasing the paramedic supplements that, that we need, you know, and one thing, the county, they're getting ready to go to 2472 for their EMS. They're getting ready to add an extra shift. So if I'm an EMT at $43,000 a year, I'll leave here and go work at Rutherford County and work a third less of my time. Our pay scale's getting ready to be way behind if the county goes to 2472. Hamilton County just did it. And that's a direct competitor. And, you know, they're doing it because of the, the turnover they had and the burnout they have, but, you know, we face that every day in emergency services. And it's not just the fire department, it's the police department, it's our 911 dispatchers. I mean, you know, the 911 dispatchers, if we don't have anybody answering the phone, we don't get there. So please, when you're doing this in the budget, please seriously look, it's not a percentage at this point, we're several, several thousand behind. And the mayor had some good talking points, you know, the COVID money that's coming up.
I hate to cut you off.
I gotta go, I don't know, three minutes.
You're at five minutes now, and I'm...
So, well, thank you so much, and I appreciate everything y'all do and city staff.
We appreciate you. Matt, there's not a, a meeting that goes by that I don't think about your dad, so. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider ordinance 21013 for appropriations.
Mayor, there are a few changes that I laid out on your desk.
Yep, so you've got...
So that...
Revenue changes, the streets changes to storm water, street storm water for personnel changes, the old fort operating expenditure changes and fixed asset changes totaling $5.65 million.
Right, and that'll be part of that FY21 assignment.
Yep. This is what we talked about on...
During the presentation, right?
Yep, the one time. It probably would be good just to go ahead and talk about the salary discussion on what, what the council wants to do on, on salary.
Can you repeat the question?
What we want to do is, for those who are watching, we had a meeting before this that we talked about, a workshop, a special meeting, but to talk about what we want to do as far as the recommended salary is, or salary adjustment is 2.5% step, 1.5% COLA, and then 2.5% and 2.5% correct for public safety.
Currently in the budget, it's a 1.5% COLA across the board and 2.5% step or 1.5% open range if you're out of the step system.
Correct.
So four and three.
What was the mayor's plan?
It was a 3.5% COLA for public safety with 2.5% step for a total of 6% for public safety in the step plan. And then 2.5% COLA and 2.5% raise for everyone else.
So 6% for public safety, 5%, but the, the thought was the COLA, was to increase the COLA to be able to get that, that 3.5% increase on the COLA would get the salary, Matt, it gets the salary closer to about 414. My numbers are different than what y'all had or what you had on Franklin. I'm showing there's, there's about a $4,800 difference to Franklin, but that's just the numbers I'm, I'm going off of. This puts us, for starting salaries, we're behind Hendersonville, Nashville and Franklin is who we would be behind. But, and, and no one disagrees with you, I don't even like talking about the MAG study that we went through, so. But that's, the proposal would be to 5, 6, then a stipend from the American Relief Recovery...
American Relief Investment Act.
Grant for 2,500 stipend and 1,500 stipend. I was asked the question after the meeting, is there a limit on what we can give for the stipend?
There is up to like 150% of the employee's salary. But I think you would have to apply based on every hour they worked retroactively during COVID for COVID direct response. So that would be something that's probably not been tracked or, you know, for direct COVID response for, across the board on all of our employees like that. So I think that would be a very difficult test.
What stipend is Franklin giving on the recovery?
My understanding is that it's $1,000.
I'm fine with that. I think when you factor in that we did 4.5% last year as well as the stipend.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking 11, 12% on a 12-month period.
Pretty decent.
If you include the stipend.
More than that with the stipend.
So, I mean, I, I don't think that means there's not work to do. Obviously, I think the, the study shows that we're committed to doing more work, but I mean, I also think, I mean, Rick, you make a good point from the standpoint of doing more today. I'd rather have more information and figure out what to do to try to fix that problem if we can. A lot of those issues, comp issues, rather than making a decision blind and not knowing what, what we're doing.
So if we, if we went with the 6%, the 5%, the 2,500 and the 1,500, could we put into our budget, or not our budget, but into, all of us agreeing that we're going to have to, to reassess this? Pam thought that the class and comp study could be back by, by end year, so our mid, our mid-year. So is it possible that, seeing where our sales tax revenue, that we say, okay, at, at six months, we're going to look where we are? Matt, you weren't here, I don't think earlier, in the earlier meeting, but, you know, our market is not, I said this McKinney, Texas, our market is Smyrna, Laverne, Rutherford County, Hendersonville. But one thing, Galton, one thing Councilman LaLance brought up was to really make sure in this class and comp, to do a deeper dive, to get an idea of truly what the other benefits are in those other municipalities that we could say, for instance, we give, you know, sick and vacation time is unlimited as far as, or let me rephrase that, sick time and vacation time is limited, but that you're able to accrue those, correct? Correct?
Yes, unlimited, yes.
Yes, so we've got, you know, I forget what the unfunded liability we have on our books for sick and vacation time, but I think it would be good that we look to see what are some of these other communities doing on sick and vacation time. And if anything, it helps us compare apples to apples when we do have someone that may be looking at leaving, that we could say, hey, have you taken, or our, our people could say, have you taken this into consideration, that when you go to Nashville or wherever, you're going to be losing your, your sick time or your comp time, basically you use it or lose it. So it would be good to get all of those things in play. If, what we've had in the past is municipalities don't typically like to share that information. So I, I would ask, I think it would be important, knowing after going through three or four of these class and comp studies, I really would like to see how we engage better transparency and employee participation, that, that is open and transparent through all those discussions.
I have one question.
Sure.
Comparing the mayor's plan to Madeline's plan, if we did the 4% instead of the 3.5, does that take us over Franklin and Hendersonville's starting pay?
Some 300,000. No, I mean, we're, if, our current, if we do the, the 3.5% COLA, our firefighter step one gets to $41,744.07. So that's, that's going to put us $6,000 ahead of Laverne, 3,000 ahead of Rutherford County. It puts us about 900 ahead of Smyrna, puts us about 4,000 below Franklin, 3,000 below Hendersonville, and it puts us $8,600 behind Nashville. So, I mean, that, that's going to be an overall, another discussion as we go through class and comp. I, I don't know.
And the point I was trying to get to with what you brought up was, you know, when you start, when you start getting pretty close to those numbers, it could be the difference in your participation in healthcare, right? I mean, you know, if...
401K matching, or...
Right. 401K match, you know, is a factor, but most people kind of don't think about it. It's a pretty big deal, that 8% match, but, you know, healthcare, your participation in health insurance, it's right off your paycheck. So it's a dollar for dollar change, whether you contribute, don't contribute or whatever. And we do, I think, actually contribute some to 401K, don't we automatically? Do we?
It's 3%.
It's not a match, right?
3% automatic.
So we give 3% whether people contribute or not.
No, they have to contribute.
They contribute 3%.
That's what I was asking, okay. Sorry, that's what I was asking about. I'm sorry, that's what I was questioning, but I thought you said we did. So, anyway, so the only dollar for dollar thing is the medical that I can come up with, which is, you know, if, if they're participating at 500 a month and we're participating at 200 a month, that's $3,600 difference, so all of a sudden we're above that 3%. That's why I wanted to not try to spend all that powder. That, that was the reason why I was trying, you know, kind of, my gut was telling me to, you know, stay with a number, maybe with what he had, and then, and then still continue to figure out, no, we're going to do that by Christmas.
Right, that was my point.
The big issue, I don't, the big issue when we go through the class and comp, that we, we, is always the tougher issue that as we look at where, you know, we made the decision back when we went, we moved from our old class and comp two or three years ago, and I think we allocated 2.5 million to move public safety to the step plan, that we weren't in the step plan, we were in that...
Open range.
Really, math, yes. But we, we solved the compression issue to some extent, but as we go through this class and comp, we're going to have to be cognizant that if we raise, the reason we're doing the COLA right now is to be able to increase that salary so it doesn't create a greater compression issue, but we're really going to have to look through that comp study that as we see that we need to increase people, that it doesn't compress someone who's making something coming in as a new employee up to someone who's worked here four or five years. So that's always going to have to be ranged out to, to fix that.
That's part of why I brought up in the other meeting, the idea of making sure we study or figure out where Pam, I guess is not here, but, you know, the whole idea of hiring people in at an experienced level. Now, whether, if they've been working five years and they come in at the year five number, I, I don't know what the right way to do it is, but, you know, the idea to say, well, I've been at Murfreesboro for 3,476 days and you've been at Murfreesboro for 3,276 days, that I just ought to be making more money than you no matter what, even though you were doing your job for 15 years, you've got 15 years more experience doing your job than I do, it's just the fact that you've been at Murfreesboro for a little bit longer. I mean, in the world that I live in, that's a, that's a completely just, you know, that's not even in the, you know, in what I deal with, is if you've got a whole bunch of good experience and you know how to do your job just as good as the next guy with the same amount or even less experience, you get paid for that. So I just think, especially given the situation that we're in, where we're getting snaked, that we got to be able to do the same thing, and we can't, if we're killing, if we're cutting off our nose in spite of our face by having a policy that nobody else has, maybe it kills two birds with one stone. See if I can fit one more adage into that, but...
So that's, that's really where, you know, the information that you look at. At Franklin, you know, their base entry salary is $40,040. Paramedic base entry, base entry level is $46,490. And chief, we're requiring all of our firefighters that we hire now have to become paramedics, correct?
You've got advanced EMT.
Yeah, EMT, yeah. So experienced firefighter, they have it 45,272, and experienced firefighter with paramedics, 51,772. So I think those are all the things that we need, instead of just chasing the rabbit, that we need to get all of those items nailed down, and then we can make that, and make that decision. But, you know, to the parts of the public who's watching, we saved somewhere between $5 to $7 million this year through COVID. But, you know, to the parts of the public who's watching, we saved somewhere between five to seven million dollars this year through COVID with increased revenues. But, you know, the five to seven million we saved is because we were six months without giving employee rate pay increases, which is why we did the four, the four and a half percent or four percent, so.
You can't make a motion, right?
I can't, no.
I make a motion, we adopt the mayor's plan.
Can we call it the Mayor Shane McFarland?
Mayor Shane McFarland.
Two twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Real formal, so second.
Just to be clear, that's gonna be for public safety, that's gonna be a three and a half percent COLA, two and a half percent step raise, and a twenty-five hundred dollar stipend for open-range employees. That's gonna be two and a half, two and a half and fifteen hundred dollars.
That's correct.
With, if you wouldn't mind adding to your motion that we are going to revisit, well, I don't, you don't have to add to your motion, but we're gonna revisit this mid-year.
Six months.
Yeah, six months with a class and comp plan to figure out what that next number's gonna be.
And then does your motion also include the changes that were on the desk?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, to include those as well.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you now have, we need to consider ordinance twenty-one oh thirteen as amended with the increased salary for, for public safety and open-range employees for the fiscal twenty-two appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have ordinance twenty-one, uh, zero, one, four, fiscal year, uh, twenty-two tax rate.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have adoption of the proposed fiscal year twenty-two, and these are our other budgets for administration. We have resolution twenty-one, R seventeen. This is water resources.
Move for approval. Second.
Mayor, I'd like to just point out that water will also receive the same raise that y'all just approved here, okay?
Correct.
Their, their exhibit will probably get updated.
In, in, in perfect timing, Darren Gore walks in the door. All right. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
I just had to clap.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Yes.
Mr. LaLance.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Resolution twenty-one, R eighteen, Stormwater Utility Management.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Resolution twenty-one, R nineteen, City Schools.
So move.
Second.
Third.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Resolution twenty-one, R twenty, the Evergreen Cemetery.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second.
We do have some, we got some work coming on that. Have we, did we solidify that we're gonna get some investigation on the fence issue?
I think.
I think that would be less reimbursing than that would not affect their budget.
Bingo.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Resolution twenty-one, R sixteen, this is other post-employment benefits, OPAB.
OPAB. Move for approval. Second.
Motion, second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, I'm gonna do something a little out of the ordinary, but I'm gonna move Mr. Gore, who's typically at the bottom, number thirty-four. Mr. Gore, you're on, you're on deck now. Approval of roof replacement for the Water Resource Recovery Facility.
What number is this, thirty?
So I don't know if I have the memo that I wrote to you guys, but there's a roof out at our Water Resource Recovery Facility that needs replacing. And I think it's around a hundred and fifty thousand, and we only budgeted like one thirty-five, and so we're taking fifteen thousand from reserves. So we need to replace that roof. We would request your approval.
Move for approval.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
All right, we care, daycare, kitchen, laundry renovation. This is from administration.
Move for approval.
Second. Great job. You did a great job.
That was awesome.
Perfect.
Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
I just happened to yow. Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
You bet I do.
Mr. Martin.
It's great timing. Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Yeah, many of y'all don't remember, but we had a long discussion, and Ken Honeycutt got up to present, and we read what needed to be done, and he just looked at the council and said, y'all got any questions? That was it. So that was better, though, Kayla. All right, we have water main improvement cost reimbursement agreement with Consolidated Utility District, and this is for the Burtonob Road property. Sam.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, uh, Consolidated Utilities entered into an agreement with another property opposite side of Burtonob Road. That, uh, property decided not to move forward on a cost reimbursement agreement to extend a water line along the city-owned property. CUD's offered that, uh, same contract to us for a cost reimbursement agreement to add the water line on the north side of the city-owned property. Cost of that is estimated at a hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. This will avoid city having to install this water line later, and it would also avoid the project management and contract administration cost that would come to the city if we installed this at a later date. Uh, staff recommends approval. Authorize the mayor to sign the cost reimbursement agreement with CUD.
Any questions for Mr. Huddleston?
Move for approval.
Uh, motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have vehicle purchase for code enforcement inspectors. Kevin.
Mayor McFarland, council, thank you. Uh, I believe this is the first time I've had the privilege to present anything to y'all, so any questions?
You're, you're gonna be in the top three, Kevin.
I was gonna challenge Trey to some push-ups, but he already left.
Move for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you guys. I'll be back.
All right, we have Lidle Street approvals, and this is a professional services agreement. Mr. Griffith.
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor, members of the council. This will extend our Lidle Street project that we started, uh, a few years ago from Broad Street, and will also support the, um, the new development of the First United Methodist property, the block, block surrounding it. It's a, um, design contract with SEC in the amount of a hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'll be happy to answer any questions you've got.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
So move. Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to River Rock Beezy Road Connection. This is another professional services agreement.
Yes, this is the, uh, design contract with Volkert, uh, to do the connector road between River Rock Boulevard and Beezy Road. It was identified in the twenty forty major thoroughfare plan as a recommended short-term improvement. It will also, of course, support the, um, uh, the residential area i- in that area, as well as the new Costco that's, uh, set to open in, in a couple of months. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So move. Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Uh, Mr. Griffith, we had a, just to brief the council, we had a really good meeting this afternoon with Mr. Griffith and Ms. Emerson about traffic calming and our, um, speed, I don't, speed cushion program. So I think they're gonna be coming to us with recommendations on what to do. I think we, we installed those in, on Alexander in February, so we're gonna be nearing that August timeline. We, we set a six-month trial period, so that's gonna be coming to us with some, with some recommendations. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we have an agreement for roof replacement on Rogers Park Pavilion Number One. Nate.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this is for, uh, your consideration this evening is a contract with Rice Construction for replacement of the pavilion roof at Rogers Park. Uh, this roof is over thirty years old, is leaking pretty considerably. It's creating some structural damages. Uh, the, this was publicly bid. Uh, the lowest bid was Rice Construction, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and funds are allocated for this project in the operating budget. And it's a whole lot less than what Darren wanted for a roof.
Any questions for Nate?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have a, a contract to purchase, uh, more mobile service surveillance trailers for the police department. Chief Bowen.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. For your consideration is a request to purchase two, uh, mobile surveillance trailers at a cost of forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars each. Uh, this will be funded by the FY twenty-one fixed asset budget. These trailers are the towable trailers that many of you may have seen around the square recently. Basically allows us to deploy a camera, uh, in areas, uh, special events where we're having crime issues and set it up fairly quickly and monitor what's going on.
Move. Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to purchase a property along Butler Drive. Mr. Hippen.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Thank you. Uh, so what you have before you is a contract to purchase twenty-two acres along Butler Drive for public works. Uh, as we, as you see there, this was, uh, this will be purchased to start a solid waste transfer station. Uh, also, along with that, we were looking for places to actually place a salt barn as well, so it'll be multi-use. And then the, uh, future for relocation for the street department, uh, as well. Uh, this, uh, property is available at a hundred thousand dollars per acre, acre totaling two point two million dollars. It will be paid for out of the two thousand eighteen CIP, uh, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have with that.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Hillis, one quick question since we've got a motion. Can you explain why that we're looking at buying a transfer station on that, on that side of town?
Absolutely. So as we started looking, Mr. Gore could probably tell you better than I can, we started looking around in a couple of things. This is probably the most valuable piece, as far as a financial piece that we found that we can afford to do what we want to do. And the location itself is right beside of the interstate corridor, so we're able to access the interstate a lot easier as well. One thing we struggle with, with the north side facility is just the interstate access, especially from a street department standpoint, and it will be the same way with solid waste. Is being able to utilize that corridor to be able to, uh, get in and off the different, uh, exits there throughout the city, uh, and we don't seem like we're locked in as well, so.
But overall, this should improve the efficiency of our solid waste department on not having to wait.
Absolutely. We spend about, what, three hours up there per truck times thirteen, and we put a dollar value to that at about a hundred and twenty-two dollars an hour. So what do we figure up? About twelve thousand dollars a week is about what we come up with, just in cost setting and idle time out at the landfill. So this is gonna be a huge improvement for us. These guys pull in, they dump the truck, and they go right back to work.
You anticipate if we, I mean, obviously, we're not, we're not approving the transfer station.
No.
We're just proving.
Proving the prop, purchase of the property, that's correct.
You know, we'll get a lot of more of that, but.
Absolutely. We'll come back to you with, with, with that as well.
Do you anticipate the transfer station will be for kind of the southern routes only, or will all the?
At first, it'll be for all. But then we had other conversations about maybe building one on the north side of town sometime, and then splitting city services for, you're not just running all over town, obviously. It would be more efficient if you could split. Actually, we want to do that for the entire public works department as well. As far as mowing and everything, uh, the other avenues that we do, salt, mowing, um.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to engineering services contract for, for the purchase of property along, uh, Butler Drive.
Also, this goes with it as well. This is a engineering contract with Griggs and Maloney to be able to do, uh, uh, some survey and work out here as well. So they will provide the, uh, engineering and environmental consulting, and in their scope of work, they'll be making sure that everything that this property meets all the state and federal regulations in addition to survey and geotechnical information as well. Uh, this will be, also be paid for out of the FY eighteen CIP at a not to exceed it, uh, thirty-four thousand dollars.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Um, I, I want to publicly say we're not done yet, but, um, for the finance team, thank y'all for your hard work on putting the budget together. These budgets, we still have a lot of hard work to do, to get to mid-year, but these budgets over the last many years are so much easier than they used to be on going, you know, line item by line item on each department. So thank y'all for your hard work. Aaron, Melissa, uh, thank y'all. Typically, we wouldn't do a budget in a night. It would be weeks. So, great job.
Yep.
All right, um, we'll move to licensing.
Okay, we've got, uh, a few beer permits tonight. We have an ownership change for a restaurant at twenty-eight, twelve, Oakport Parkway, Suite G. We have a new location for a brewery and taproom manufacturer permit at nine oh six Ridgely Road. We have a new restaurant location at sixteen oh two West Northfield Boulevard, Suite two hundred. That permit is actually moving from a different location. We also have several special event permits, uh, for, uh, the charity circle. One is at fifteen thirty Riverview Drive, one at seventeen fifteen Riverview Drive, and one at seventeen oh two Shag Bark Trail. Uh, none of the, um, background checks are gonna be a problem for meeting our requirements, and all of the regular permits still like to finishing their building codes inspections. So we would not issue those permits until that has been completed, if you approve them tonight.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.